Well, good morning, everybody. Thank you for joining us this morning. Sorry, we're a little bit late. As a commission, we are houseless for a few more months and it's a building room gets reaccredited. But thank you for being willing to join us this morning. I'd like to call the February seventh, twenty twenty-three regular county commissioners meeting to order. Commissioner Argera.
Here.
Commissioner Jones.
Present.
And Commissioner Gose are also here. If you would stand and join me for the plate of the ladies, I appreciate it, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands in nation, letter God, in the resolve of the governor's committee.
Thank you. We'll move now to item three, the public hearing, and the first public hearing is the Bluey subdivision preliminary and final plaque and subdivision permit S D dash zero nine dash two two. Is there anybody who would like to speak on or against the Bluey subdivision in the room here? We'll go in the room, we'll go online. On or against the Bluey subdivision? How about online? Anybody on or against the Bluey subdivision? Last call online or in person? Commissioners, I entertain a motion to propose a public hearing.
I move both public hearing on Bluey subdivision. Second.
Moved in second. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing, no, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all is close inside. That motion carries. I'd like to open up the Einzpar subdivision final plaque and subdivision permit S D dash one two dash two two. Once again, we'll go into the room. Is anybody here to speak on or against the Einzpar subdivision final plaque? Seeing that, how about online? Would anybody like to speak on or against the Einzpar subdivision? Last call, online or in person for Einzpar? Commissioners, I entertain a motion to propose a public hearing for Einzpar.
Also move second.
Moved in second. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing, no, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye, all is close inside. That motion carries. And final public hearing this morning for Comnet Centennial Tower application L U C T zero one dash two two. Would anybody like to speak on or against the Comnet Centennial Tower application? Go in the room here first. How about online? Last call. Person in online. Commissioners, let entertain a motion for that. Public hearing be closed.
I move that we close the public hearings on net.
Moved in second. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing, no, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all is close inside. That motion carries. Thank you. Item four, comments from the public. If you would like to make a public comment, the mic turn is here. If you just introduce yourself, so you can keep that in the record, you're more than welcome to make a public comment. You guys are making this easy on us today. How about online? Does anybody want to make a public comment online? Online or in person? Commissioners, I entertain a motion to propose a public comment.
And that means please public comment here. Second.
Moved in second. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing, no, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye, all is close inside. That motion carries. Commissioner Argera, any disclosures?
I have none.
Commissioner, don't disclose.
None.
And I have none also. Item six, considerations of changes on your agenda, Jennifer. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Gose. I would request that we remove item number twenty-eight from today's agenda. After talking to Rod, we're going to wait until the meeting on the twenty-first and we'll build on that agenda.
Thank you, Jennifer. And I'd also move to be removed. Item number nine from the agenda. It, but it's no on Friday, they were ready for the presentation.
Taste if I have a change to it yet.
My commissioners, I would like to add a note of noncompliance for non nonprofit review of our funding.
Okay. Just to get all those other ones. Where would you like to add that?
Twenty-one are those letters of the ball.
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one.
Because they're very big. We gotta come in.
Yeah. It's just an added expense.
Why? I can't see it.
Okay.
He was also nine.
Yep. Nine and twenty-eight.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, any other changes? Thank you so much. I entertain a motion for item seven, approval of the consent agenda.
I move that we approve the consent agenda. Last second and motion.
Moved in second. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing, no, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye, all is close inside. That motion carries. We're now on the regular agenda. First up, Jake, good morning. Welcome. Tell us a little bit about our house, please.
Yes, thank you. There, Commissioner. I just wanted to give you an update because we we have been homeless for a number of weeks and unfortunately it's gonna continue to be that way until about the end of April and reasons for the delay. And I I wanted to have a change order before the commissioners this morning, but yesterday we were still making changes to the layout of the guy's chair and some desks and stuff that will have minor cost impacts.
Thank you. Is my on? Is there a green light there? There we go. There we go. Not close enough. Thank you.
And just to inform everybody why the kind of the schedule had got pushed back. We ended up having to get significantly more in-depth electrical design from our contractor, which required me to request a as-built plans from the city through a FOIA request, and it took four weeks. Then the permit took three weeks to get from the city. And then, as I mentioned, we just changed. I made a few changes to the diet's layout yesterday. So at the next meeting, I will have a change order request for extension and some change order items to discuss whether we want them or need them and whether we want to approve some of them or all of them or what are the cases. So that is, that's where we're at with the commissioners' room. So if you had any questions, I am going.
Commissioners, any question?
What, what's the schedule? Do you have any idea of our schedule for us? I I believe the room will be complete at like the middle of March, maybe the first of March, but the actual case work and all of the stuff that is required to make it functional will be in and installed until probably near the end of April, the mid to the end of April. So it kind of depends on how their suppliers can get their material or their contractors.
Sorry, Taylor. I'm sorry about that. Thank you, Jake. I appreciate it. Item nine's been removed, so I.
Just so that we're clear to the public to know where we'll be holding these meetings, you said that we have arranged with the we have arranged with public library to meet.
Commissioner Argera, I have reached out to the library. I have not heard back from them yet. But we will post it on the main page of the website to us where next meetings will be. Hopefully, they'll all be at the library, but I don't know when. We'll get that information now as soon as possible. Thank you. Our next meeting, though, the evening meeting, will be in this room as well.
These things are nice. It's fantastic. It's got a beautiful view on here. Item ten, present for approval, R F P for Beach Street remodel. Jennifer, good morning.
Good morning, commissioners. So this is not a new packet. I have a few details that Jake and I need to get together on to put it out, but what this is is the architectural and engineering services to renovate and expand the existing building at thirty-eight twenty-one Beach Street, which is a Beach Street building. And the renovation portion of that would be looking at the first floor of it. We already have the design. We're working with the architect on the design of the second floor now. Where so then it's also an expansion out the east end of that building. That building was designed so that it could be expanded. And we are looking at. So currently, there's approximately eleven thousand square feet in individual space that doesn't include the apartment space. There's just over sixteen thousand square feet in the building. So we're looking at at replicating that on the other side and then also possibly expanding it a little bit from what it is so that we can make sure that if we're able to do this, we have the ability to move all of the county services that we had talked about moving into that.
Thank you, Jennifer. And just a little background for anybody. County has, I don't know, seven or nine buildings, I think, that have different parts of our services. If this were to come, and it's a big, yeah, to the end, we would have probably the courthouse and fifth building in addition to the road bridge. And so.
And also the five oh one.
And five oh one. So this would consolidate government services and make room for growth in not only this building, but some of the people here who virtually opposite pile up each other. And so Ms. Scott, thank you very much. Commissioners, any question?
Um, yes, I do.
Sure.
Isn't that, doesn't that building have basically a knockaway wall to the east that allows for expansion quite easily?
That's my understanding, yes. I think my understanding is that when that building was designed, it has that knockaway wall on the east to allow to replicate that other side, essentially allow for expansion.
Yeah, perfect.
Yeah.
And the county does all the building and the land. It's outright at this point. Any else? Thank you, Jennifer. I appreciate it. Thanks. Jake, for that update. Eleven. Oh. Yeah, we didn't even motion. Thank you. I didn't entertain a motion for item ten.
I move that we approve our Beach Street remodel. My second.
Moved in second. Any further discussion?
Could we make a friendly amendment to that if it's okay with Commissioner Argera to direct the court to advertise as well?
Yes. Add to direct the court to advertise.
Second, you agree?
Yes.
Moved in second. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing, no, all is in favor, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye, all is close inside. That motion carries. Thank you, Jennifer. Thank you, James. Item eleven, present for approval, additional funding amount of four thousand nine hundred and two dollars and sixty-five cents. You pay for one percent funds to pay for generator repairs. Good morning.
Good morning, commissioners. So throughout the county, we have ten generators at critical facilities, which ensures continuity of government and operations during power outages. On top of the year, the maintenance costs for the ten generators require repair. Our initial budget request of nine thousand will cover the preventative maintenance of all ten generators, but repair of only three. And requesting approximately forty-nine hundred dollars from you so we can repair all four units, bringing our generator fleet status to good standing. There is a possibility the final cost of repairs will be less than the total amount they have requesting. Your approval, we can move forward with scheduling of preventative maintenance and repair this month.
Thank you, that, commissioners, any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. I entertain a motion for item eleven then.
I move that we approve item eleven as presented. Second.
Moved in second. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing, no, all is in favor, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye. Aye.
Aye, all is close inside. Motion carries. Thank you, Steph, for arranging that and getting the maintenance at the same time as the year of the service. Item twelve, present for approval, Albany County Recreation Board application for sponsorship for the S M O Nordic Association. For a recreation board request in the amount of eleven thousand to help with general operations of the association, heat trail maintenance, steam trail reroutes and expansion program.
Bailey and Kelly Steiner, President, Medicine Bow Nordic Association.
The pleasure, Kelly.
Thank you. We're requesting eleven thousand portal, sixty-eight hundred for general operations and forty-two hundred for insurance. That's it.
Commissioners, any questions? You don't have to have a.
Fantastic.
Yeah. You don't have to have a council part of the season. The season can break.
We had a meeting last night and I don't remember the count, but it's a lot. A good snow year and if you're up there, and I think you are, it's it's getting bigger all the time. Yeah, we've had a banner January. Memberships are up, donations are up. It's doing great. Our biggest need, as you probably know, is a new parking lot and that's a poor service thing that we're doing great.
Kelly, thank you so much. Anywhere around to have a global effect of recreation opportunities, twenty-five, thirty-plus, I think. Yeah. So that's, thank you. Thank you for your support.
Kelly, you know, have they decided on a name for that newer short loop?
No.
Okay, so it remained B till.
Yeah. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bailey, would you like us just to hear all of these? Because it says present for approval on each one of them, but then we do have to rank them, so.
Yeah, so the process, which all of you have been through before, you will be ranking them, but you're also approving that this is something that you want to sponsor as well. I do know that the city this year, they've actually cut back on some of their requests. So if that's something that you wish to do on any of these, that's something that we'd do now as well. So then it's in our minute. But what we'll do is you'll hear everybody and then the last item for the one right after you is the resolution and then you guys will prioritize them and then I'll take them. And just as a reminder, it was a different application process this year. I completely changed that before it went out in November and we have been seven applicants this year and there are definitely some new faces.
Okay, thank you. So commissioners, I entertain a motion for item twelve, please.
I move that really approved item twelve as presented. Second.
It's been moved in second. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing, no, all is in favor, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye, all is close inside. That motion carries. That moves us up to thirteen, but then for approval, Albany County Rec Board application for sponsorship for the Laramie Trap Club for recreation board request in the amount of ten thousand, two hundred and thirty-one dollars and seventy-one cents to help with the purchase of a new riding lawnmower. Good morning.
Morning. I'm Jesse Ballard. I am the secretary of Laramie Trap Club. We're just presenting a request for a little over ten thousand dollars for a new riding lawnmower. Our existing lawnmower is over twenty years old and continues to fail on us and to the point where some of our members were bringing out their own personal equipment to mow the facility. In total, our facility is about fifty acres in size, but the area that we mow on a regular basis, usually two to three times a month, is about eight to ten acres in size, and that's around the trap houses, the trap fields, the shade shelters in the clubhouse itself. Then we have about another twenty acre area that we mow two or three times in the summer that helps house where individuals park their campers during our registered shoots. Our participation at the trap club is continuing to be really good. We have upwards of twenty to thirty league teams that shoot in our summer league. And then this past summer, we hosted the state, Wyoming State Trap Shoot, which brought in over three hundred shooters and their families to the facility. And it's a, it's a five-day event that runs Wednesday through the following Sunday.
Thank you, Jesse. Commissioners, any questions?
Jesse, for some reason, the application itself, we ended up getting the creepy of the N S M O Nordic Association over and over again. So I didn't get to see everything that you pulled out.
Okay.
What's your membership at this point? Just local membership?
Local membership. It's mostly around our trap, trap club member or the members sits at about a hundred and thirty individuals that shoot our league, which is the primary number of members. Then you have ten or fifteen that just have either lifetime memberships or just purchased memberships so they get a reduced fee or use our claimant system. Then we have registered shoots that come in, that bring in local shooters plus kind of the southeast Wyoming and as far away as Casper. And those shoots usually have around forty shooters that come to them. And then the larger events, the state that we hold, anywhere from used to be four years, then it was cut back to three years, and now we've been asked to start hosting it every two years now. So we're seeing an increase amount of people attending our events. And then we don't keep really good records of people who just stop by for practice. But one thing that we've done is we consistently open our club, our club from ten AM until two PM on both Saturday and Sunday for anybody in the general public to come out and shoot travel.
And how how does our area compare to other trap clubs?
Ours is probably one of the more premier trap clubs in the area. We're larger than Cheyenne. Cheyenne doesn't have a large enough facility to host state. Torrington has a large enough facility to host state as well as Casper and Sheridan. But Casper and Sheridan do not have the number of trap shooters at them. So they're the two that have started to they requested to drop out of the rotation, so they're no longer shooting. But our facilities is one of the premier in this area.
Any other questions? With none, I entertain a motion for item thirteen.
I move that we approve item thirteen as presented. Second.
Moved in second. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing, no, all is in favor, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye. Aye.
Aye, all is close inside. That motion carries. Thank you, Jessica, very much. Item fourteen, present for approval, Albany County Recreation Board application for sponsorship for the Laramie Rifle Range for a recreation board request in the amount of thirteen thousand nine hundred and ten dollars to impose a portion of the existing structure created in all seasons shooting area. Good morning.
Good morning, commissioners. I am David Asmuth, the president of the Laramie Rifle Range. I appreciate your time this morning for my presentation. I am making a one-time request for thirteen thousand nine hundred and ten dollars to help us improve an existing facility. Solicitation, we, the L R R C pays for the insurance and upkeep of all facilities and improvements on the property annually through income provided by membership fees. Solicitation for grant funding helps us expand our offerings by having a variety of offerings that are attractive to diverse group of shooters. We are able to bring in new members, guests who spend money in the community and improve the experience, especially for certain populations. This specific improvement would aim to serve the following needs: enhance our two hundred yard range for year-round use, including through the winter months with winter months with less shooter discomfort from the winter Wyoming elements. It would provide a better environment to teach new hunters how to properly sight in their equipment, potentially leading to more humane shots taken while hunting with a higher hit probability. Reloaders would be able to use the enclosed area to prevent develop better loads, increasing their ability to compete in local and national competitions and providing a more accommodating facility that allows for the use allows for those using a wheelchair or other assistive devices. The enclosure would allow for more comfortable area that allows shooters a comfortable area in which to enjoy the range time year-round. Such an offering could become a regional attraction, drawing shooters from neighboring states as well as there are a few, very few alternatives. Most indoor ranges only go to twenty-five yards with a few extending to a hundred. This two hundred yard range with the winter shooting shed improvement would offer an excellent balance of comfort and distance. And our current offering at one hundred yards is used frequently year-round and allows for a very comfortable and safer shooting experience even on sub-zero days. Shooters are able to concentrate on getting their hunting rifles zeroed at a reasonable distance prior to testing in a more field-like conditions.
Thank you, David. Commissioners, any questions? No. David, I just have one question on your, on your statement of expenses and revenue. There's a line that says forty thousand two hundred dollars for board of director fees. What, what is that?
The board of directors are paid twice yearly, one thousand two hundred dollars.
Okay. All right, thank you. Appreciate it. Commissioners, any? Any further?
I just want to say that the board of directors spends a lot of time at the rifle range. It's not like they just meet and that's it. They're, they're out there in person a lot at the rifle range. So I think it's an excellent thing to accomplish.
Yeah, thank you. No, I think you're having a hard time hearing you, Terry. You might have to pull that microphone closer.
I don't think I have a microphone.
I don't think she has one.
Okay.
I will just stand up.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, David. Appreciate it. Thank you. Commissioners, I entertain a motion for item twelve, please.
I move that we approve item fourteen as presented. Second.
Moved in second. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing, no, all is in favor, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye, all is close inside. That motion carries. Item fifteen, present for approval, Albany County Rec Board application for sponsorship for the Albany County Fairgrounds for a recreation board request in the amount of thirty-two thousand seven hundred and sixty-four dollars and seventy-five cents to help with the upgrades to the swine wash rack, upgrade the family area with benches, picnic tables and playground equipment and replacement of the arena drag attachments. Bailey and looks like Taylor, this morning, good morning.
Morning, commissioners. So we have a combination of requests within this grant funding request. I have been fortunate enough to be able to take some classes on fair management and one of those was one on consumer protection and specifically looking at like patrons of the fairgrounds during fair exhibitors of the fair and then in non-fair time as well. And that's where a lot of the sheep and swine wash rack drainage comes from. It's just a piece that we, we've already started as a board, the fair board has started to put into place some things that will help protect consumers as they come out to the fairgrounds. One of those is the enteric pathogen plan. This will be in combination and kind of follow up with the enteric pathogen plan itself and the things that we will do during, during fair time. We need to upgrade the swine wash rack to allow for proper drainage. Right now, the water runs away from the wash rack and where people can walk through it. We have tried to mitigate different and do different things, even when I was a superintendent before I had this position and those just didn't come to fruition. So our the management that's there now, we looked at different possibilities and what we would like to do is put a concrete tank that we would then have all of the water flow into the public and the exhibitors and other animals would not be exposed to this, the water coming out of the swine wash rack. Because we all know what else is in with the water. So it would basically help to remove the water out of that sense and take that piece of the risk and mitigate that. For the sheep wash rack, the wash rack itself was pretty much homemade and built when the barn was built. Our volume that we use it now is above and beyond what it is capable of holding and currently each year our maintenance or or maintenance crew for the summer has to go in there and some at least five to six times during the week in order to, and it takes the manpower to stand there because of the way that it is currently built. So we're looking at doing a compartmented tank in order to kind of alleviate some of that and it doesn't flood back into the barn. People, our public aren't really exposed to the sheep wash rack, but it is exhibitors who walk through it, then walk where the public is and then animals themselves as it goes back into the barn. So just trying to create that barrier of enteric pathogen protection for consumers and exhibitors like, as well as the animals. Because some of these animals don't just stay after county fair, they go on to state fair. The other piece to this is that we would like to not have people sitting on random lawn chairs when there are steers walking around behind them or on our utility boxes. And so we're looking at putting in different benches with backs and no backs up against farms so people have places to sit with their families while they're at fair, whether they're exhibitors or they're patrons. And the other piece to that is that we would like to buy some very high-quality picnic tables because we have several areas where families could gather, whether it's during fair time or non-fair time. Currently, the playground, the slide piece to that, it is a metal slide and we all know how hot those get. And so I would like to upgrade that as they've done with other pieces of the playground equipment. So this is just kind of creating more of a safety feature and more of a family atmosphere as well as trying to protect the patrons that do utilize the fairgrounds during the year. The arena drag piece, those each year, it takes twenty-five pieces to basically replace so we can utilize it and we can create a rideable arena at the fairgrounds. We have so much clay in our soil that our drag, it takes a lot on the drag each year. We did purchase the drag originally right before I got here with, right before I took over the fairgrounds with a rec board grant. And so we, we added that in as a piece to the rec board grant itself. And those, basically, it goes in and it, it helps to smooth out the arena once we get the dirt right for the summer. Jubilee days, we have people that haul in all the time. It's more of a community space and there's more people that utilize the arena than what you think. And I certainly didn't know the total number that used it. In the wintertime, they move over to our ranger arena, which we have our own equipment over there and it's an indoor heated arena for people to come ride and they pay a monthly fee to come ride. So we have the option for either place, but in the summertime or outdoor arena, it's large enough and it's used quite frequently. So we have the option for either place, but in the summertime or outdoor arena, it's large enough and it's used quite frequently.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions?
A question. Well, I do have a question. But Taylor, first I want to applaud you for bringing this force and trying to make the fairgrounds out there a safer. More friendly, family-friendly place that's just going to attract. Uh more usage and more. And I applaud you for that because I know in the time that we have been recently filling board membership out there. These things have been brought up, infrastructure and all. So I applaud you for bringing that is. Uh user goal before. Um about this swine wash rack. You say that uh the waste will need to be removed if necessary. If, if necessary, eventually that tanks can get filled up. Is it not going to need to be removed or, or like me?
So. There's, we have an answer and then there's some unknowns that go along with it. So it's kind of a fifty-fifty answer in that regard. The tank itself, we have two options. So if you pull up the underground works proposal that was submitted with the record grant, there are two options. There's a plastic tank. Or there's the concrete tank. The concrete tank is a thousand gallons. We would seat it right. Behind the swine wash rack. So the water would go maybe to be with the way that we are planning to refabricate everything. That is along with and I'll also go through the water piece to this because that's another big piece to our drainage issue. Um so. But with the tank itself, we, with a thousand gallons, we're not sure if it's going to have to be te- pumped out every year. Or if it is going to have to be. We're not a hundred percent sure on that. It will take going through a fair season to find out. We did feel after talking with other, we called other county fairs, like how many pigs do you guys have? Do you feel that? You know, you go through more than a thousand gallons of water or maybe slightly more um because of evaporation during the week and those types of things. And so we kind of came up with a thousand gallon tank in regards to that and talking with um the different contractors that we did speak with. So the option on there, there are two and we would prefer the concrete tank. Just for the snow and the dirt sitting on top of the plastic tank. And we would also create barriers around the plastic tank. So we don't have trailers backing or pulling over the top of it. We would prefer the concrete tank just for longevity. Of the construction project itself. If we're going to do it right, we wanted to use a concrete tank for that. The water piece to this as kind of like a side, a side note. The water had been rerouted. And the way that it was rerouted. We have a pipe that goes into the swine barn now that goes up the wall, all the way across the barn and down. So we lose a lot of our pressure. Traditionally, we hadn't had that problem, but now we have this PVC pipe where it has to take its momentum to push up and all the way across our barn. So with the, with the increased water flow that we were hoping to get for rerouting the water. A, we're going to be able to create correct shut-offs because currently we don't have them. Um and then B, we're going to be able to get some more pressure hopefully, you know, and not lose a lot of that pressure from having to go up a barn wall. Um so that's kind of our hope with this in combination um for the swine wash rack and then into the water piece to it as well.
Thank you.
Yes.
Anything, Terry? Thank you, Taylor. Appreciate it. Entertaining motion for item fifteen then.
I move that we approve, but item fourteen as presented. Second.
Moved in second. Any further discussion? Hearing seeing that all's in favor, signify by saying hi please.
Aye.
Aye.
Hi, all the votes inside. That motion carries. Item sixteen, present for approval, Albany County Recreation Board application for sponsorship for the Laramie Wrestling Booster Club. For a recreation board request in the amount of nineteen thousand seven hundred and seventy-four dollars eighty-eight cents to help with the purchase of new wrestling mats. Luke, good morning. Who is yours?
Morning commissioners. Oh, why nervous system? Uh I'm coming to you this morning not in representation of the fireboard, but in representation of the LWBC or Laramie Wrestling Booster Club. This booster club was formed as a nonprofit in two thousand and twenty um. For the purpose of basically encouraging our youth to have another sport. We branch out all the way from the young through the high school. Our focus and primary is on the high school right now until we're able to branch out. This purchase is a one-time purchase, nineteen thousand seven hundred and seventy-four dollars. Now the estimate itself is for twenty thousand seven hundred and seventy-four dollars. What we have is a match grant from the Chad Plummer Memorial Foundation. And if you're not familiar with Chad Plummer Memorial Foundation. This is a really neat deal. Um what it is, is that uh myself formed the Laramie Wrestling Booster Club. Chad, or excuse me, Craig Rumsey um is one of the coaches for Cowboy Kids. And he was a U-Dub wrestler as well as a firefighter with Miami Fire Department. Um years ago, one of his teammates um. Uh from U-Dub Wrestling, he also worked for the Forest Service. He was killed in an accident just west of town. The group of wrestlers got together and founded this Chad Plummer Memorial Foundation. And each year they've sponsored one of our high school senior wrestlers in a match scholarship. And what they do is. As our seniors graduate, they apply for a scholarship for college tuition. If they awarded that scholarship from the Chad Plummer Memorial Foundation. Um Craig, that foundation awards fifty percent to that wrestler for college and fifty percent to the booster club. So we've been able to raise funds with this. We reached out to them and asked if they'd be willing to do a match grant on this rec mil, uh rec grant and um for these mats. And they said yes. So they're pitching a thousand dollars to match for this grant. Um we're really excited about that. The mats themselves um were designed for, as the estimate was gathered by uh Coach Brinkman from Laramie High School Wrestling. Um and therefore the practice room, those mats that are in the pictures are mats that. My understanding were donated by the University of Wyoming um approximately twenty years ago. So they came from the old high school and the new high school. You can see from the pictures um how damaged or well-used that they are. Now, one of the big things about them is that they're the old-style mat, which means that they're super difficult and labor-intensive to roll up and put away. So there's. They're really not. They're kind of put out in the fall uh for the wrestling and for practice and then put away at the end of the season. In the meantime, ACT testing or whatever testing placement needs to do to use that room, they bring in the desks. You can see the type of damage that's occurred on those mats over the years. Um so it's a huge need for them. We have a match grant for it. We're really excited about the opportunity to be able to help support um Laramie Wrestling with these mats. One of the other things to note on that is because we're a booster club, we're not exclusive to the high school. These mats were designed for easy storage, as easy as mats are. They basically come in sections, they roll up. Then go up on uh rolling storage. It's the newest thing that all the high schools and colleges are doing. Uh much, much better maintenance, uh lower bacteria, lower transmission of skin. Um irritations and so on. Um. And uh they should be used also for the lower wrestling club and uh teams as well. We're hoping and then near, near future to be able to host or help host a, a large tournament, wrestling tournament, kind of like Shane Shadow or Douglas. And these mats would help out with that as well.
Thank you. Any questions?
No, it's great. Look, um.
Yeah.
This club is a co-ed club, correct?
Correct. Um yeah, actually, we're really excited. This year was um, so in the past, since two thousand and twenty, actually, we had one uh. Female wrestler on the Laramie High School Wrestling Team, um McKenna. She. Went to state each year. She performed very well. Her priority was not wrestling, though, it was in soccer. Uh so this year she's not wrestling, but she did pave the way and we had uh six girls go up wrestling team this year. Girls wrestling at the high school level is huge in terms of this is the first year that it's supported by the state and sponsored. Um some of our other teams around the state have done amazing jobs. Star Valley has thirty, twenty-six girls, I think, that went out. Sheridan had like a dozen or so. Uh Cheyenne has six to ten girls, I think, that have gone out. And then Laramie has six girls. So this is huge for us. Um and we definitely want to help uh support and sponsor that. In fact. Uh the Booster Club did uh raise money for singlets. I was actually texting some of our other board members. I can't remember the exact dollar amount. Around a thousand dollars or so to buy um six singlets for our girl wrestlers. So um it's huge. It's. In my opinion, underfunded, uh the program is. And so we're definitely trying to do our best to fill those gaps as necessary and get the word out that, you know. Laramie Wrestling is, is here and can do this.
What kind of recruitment that we do for females?
Uh for the females, one, uh one of the things that we did this year was we put all the girl wrestlers on our posters. So the, the scheduled poster that we put out every year, the Booster Club sponsors. Uh we sponsored the photographer to be able to put out those posters. It's kind of on that. All our girls are on that poster this year. Uh we put those posters up around town. We put them in the high school. Um so um. We highlight that the girls are there and I think that there's kind of a misnomer that, you know, wrestling isn't for girls or wrestling isn't for whatever. Um and so we really try to push that, that um it's for everybody, uh from young all the way through old. And then as you probably know, some of the bigger challenges that will get girl wrestlers at the younger ages and then as they kind of go through, you know, middle school and then under high school. Become very difficult for the girl wrestlers because they end up having to compete against boys. As it changes, it, it just becomes more difficult as they get older. This year, the first year that at state um in Casper um. Thursday, the day before, they're having all of the girls wrestle girls. And so it's just the, this girls themselves and then their finals is going to be, I believe, on um semifinal day on Friday. So the boys will be wrestling Friday and Saturday and the girls will have all day Thursday and then part of it's either Friday or Saturday. So finally, we'll have girls competing against girls as opposed to girls competing against boys. When McKenna, in the years passed. Uh went to state, she would compete against boys at state. Um very difficult, but she always did a great job, so.
Would be, although I like, I still like that idea because Luke, I used to be able to put my brothers to that most. Uh I would like that opportunity for other young girls.
Sure, yeah, absolutely. We're doing our best um to get the word out and that, that's sometimes a challenge. Um. The Booster Club is still rather good for the young and new, or you know, we are a final on C three. We always take donations or tax write-offs. I mean, we try to put that out as much as possible. Um and, and, and every year we've gotten bigger and better. We've been able to do more. Um our goal. Next year is to start kind of moving into the, the middle school and then obviously probably hit kids. And uh Craig Rumsey, that's been a huge avenue that we've been trying to do as well. Try and get that continuity of wrestling. You know, from small, why not, now through high school. So um it's a big deal for us, but we are still a, a small.
Well, it's nice to have other opportunities for sports than just the traditional.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Anything, Derek?
No, they're doing a great job.
Awesome.
Happy, happy.
I entertain emotion probably sixteen.
I move that we approve item sixteen as presented. Second.
Moved in second. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing that all's in favor, signify by saying hi please.
Aye.
Hi, all the votes inside. That motion carries. Thank you. Item seventeen, present for approval, Albany County Recreation Board application for sponsorship for the American Legion Post fourteen. Houston Pendleton for a recreation board request in the amount of twenty-eight hundred. Two thousand eight hundred dollars to help send ten high school age boys to Wyoming Boys State. Good morning.
Good morning, one and all. Can, can everybody hear me?
Gotcha.
Good. Um I didn't realize, but I, I guess I think I will say a little bit more about the American Legion. Many don't know much about it. We are a group of veterans. Uh any uh veteran can join, male, female, as long as they have an honorable discharge. We have several programs that we work locally and some nationally. Uh some of our real local programs, our youth programs. Uh the American, our American Legion baseball team, the Rangers, they're ours. Uh we also sponsor uh the high school rodeo club. Uh we give them a certain amount of money and they also meet. At our uh facility. And we go to some of their rodeos and we can help them collect them. Uh we were started in nineteen nineteen. And um in about nineteen thirty-five, there was a. Lot of camps going on for socialism and fascism. And the American Legion worried about that. They decided that they would do, start then Boy State. So the uh. With the idea of making those camps irrelevant. Anyway. Wyoming Boy State is for junior boys in high school to obtain knowledge of state government structure. The week, June eleventh through June seventeenth emphasizes leadership. Civic engagement, patriotism. The event will be held at the University of Wyoming. The delegates will visit the state Capitol, including a visit to Senate and Representative chambers. Plans are to meet with the governor. All expenses are paid by Post fourteen and applications will be taken online. Uh I was looking to uh. See how many, if there are any famous people that had gone to Post fourteen or to Boy State throughout the nation. And I was amazed, uh hundreds and hundreds of generals and CEOs and presidents and heads of colleges. But I wrote these down because they impressed me. Tom Brokaw. We have three NASA astronauts. My cuck will be William Quinn, you know, Bill. Bon Jovi. And then for our state, we have Richard Cheney. Uh Dave Freethandaw, he's our governor and Mike Kenzie with our US Senator. So I need them, we need, we used to be able to afford to send up to ten when it was two hundred dollars a head. It is now four hundred dollars a head. Uh we just don't have that dream anymore. We do have enough money to send three boys. Our goal this year is to send ten boys. Uh it's an amazing program and I, I would really request. That you uh give us this grant that I guarantee you it'll be well-used. And I might say that no member of Post fourteen receives a salary or a gift. Uh the only ones that get paid are, are employees who are social. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any questions, commissioners? I just have one, two questions. On your application, it said twenty-eight hundred and sixty dollars. The, the. Stuff on the agenda is twenty-eight hundred dollars. Twenty-eight sixty?
No, it's twenty-eight hundred. I think I made a zero look like a six. Okay. My handwriting is infantile at best these days. Got a little, a little shake there.
No, I didn't want to short you.
No.
Twenty-sixty and uh and then my, the, the last question is, boys and girl state is listed underneath your budget income?
Yes.
Is this just for boys or is this?
There is girl state. It is done by our authority, which is separate from us. And uh I'm uncertain what they're doing. Uh it's a, I, I just now became chairman. Uh I was chairman last year. I got the notice about two weeks before. Uh it was time, but uh, so I'm just trying to struggle through this year with mine. And I'm hoping in a few years we can join together uh Boy State and I believe Girl State both here at the university. So uh I have had, I was trying to keep this short. Uh I, I, I have had two boys in the last year lockup to me. Uh one from Casper and uh one from heat, the one and one from Eaton, Colorado. And tell me what a great program it was and don't cancel it and how much they learned and how, how important it was to them. So please help us with this. COVID and the city of Laramie, no smoking ordinance has hurt us and we just don't have funding anymore.
Well, thank you. I just wanted to make sure that I understood that this.
Yes.
I was selected to take girls' state back when I was eleven, whatever. It's just ten years ago. There was a nomination process. Is it an application process?
It's an application process. Now we go through and then we nominate those that we uh feel are most uh important. It hasn't been a problem for the last couple of years because very few boys go. They're, they just, we just couldn't get our school counselors uh fired up. However, I already have one this year. So I, I'm really impressed with that. I got one boy that wants to join us. So um but yes, you're right.
Well, I can attest to that one. So it was a good program and I enjoyed the week. I was here.
Ten years ago.
Right. If there are no more questions, I entertain what seventeen.
I move that we um approve item seventeen as presented. Second.
Move in second. Any further discussion? Hearing seeing that all's in favor, signify by saying hi please.
Aye.
Aye.
Hi, that motion carries. Thank you, sir.
Thank you and, and thank you so much. Uh believe me, our young people will pretty game.
Item eighteen, present for approval, Albany County Recreation Board application for sponsorship for the Common Outdoor Ground. For a recreation board request in the amount of fourteen thousand eight hundred and sixty-seven dollars to help with the purchase of tools, equipment and salary-related expenses. Bailey?
I believe she's actually over here.
Yes. Good morning commissioners. Um I'm Ashley and I'm here representing Common Outdoor Ground. Common Outdoor Ground is an organization that executes and organizes volunteer projects on public grounds in southeast Wyoming. We work countywide and in two thousand and twenty-two, we had a hundred and eighty-two volunteers that completed over seven hundred volunteer hours. The labor we completed last season alone is valued at over twenty-one thousand dollars. Um in two thousand and twenty-three, we are excited to expand the range of projects that we do and complete more volunteer hours. And start to offer youth-specific volunteer opportunities in collaboration with other community organizations around town. Uh this will be supported in part by a grant that we received from the Wyoming Wildlife Foundation called the Wyoming Youth and Natural Resources Grant. And our funding request is for tools. And our funding request is for tools, which will. Uh we already own like a pretty wide variety of tools that are all geared towards trail maintenance and trail building. But we've really expanded the type of projects that we do in the last couple of years. So the tools that we're requesting. Will help us do a wider range of projects, including fencing and campground related projects. Um we are also requesting a storage shed. We have really outgrown our current setup, um like our size and our capacity and you know, the amount of stuff that we own has really. Grown a lot in the last couple of years and a local business has offered to house our shed for us. Um and then we are also requesting partial salary support for our um program and volunteer coordinator position.
Thank you, Ashley. I appreciate it. Commissioners, any questions? I entertain a motion for item eighteen.
I move that we approve item eighteen as presented.
Second?
Moved in second. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing that all is in favor, signify by saying aye please.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, all of the opposed in sight. That motion carries. Just for the applicants still in the room, what they're doing here is prioritizing. Um the uh applications from the county's effective. However, the funding is given by the rec board. So um they can take a look at what we think, uh but they can choose to disregard it if they would like. So just let you know that that is. Limitations are still here. So. Um item nineteen, present for approval, resolution twenty twenty three dash zero five, a resolution designated recreation project request priorities. The Albany County School District Number One Recreation Board for funding consideration in the fiscal year twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four. Bailey, please.
Um, sorry, I lost track of that. Um now is your time to prioritize the uh projects that you heard. Um so I'll let you discuss and you let me know what you would like to do.
All right, and commissioners, did you prioritize the previous?
I did.
There you do.
I would not. And one of the reasons is that I didn't know what our total amount of money was available. To distribute.
Yeah, and I think that I don't know that amount either, uh because it's a rec bill. Uh it's like, yes, it's five hundred and some thousand dollars for the rec board.
Last, sorry.
Go ahead.
Um last year, they actually had more funds than they had projects, but it does, it does vary every year to my knowledge. Um I believe last year was actually a six hundred thousand. Uh. The city, they did decide to cut some of their, everybody took cut from amounts. Um but everybody, I believe that applied, they did, I put in their priority list. Um but it is not our funding to. Really distribute, so we. The only thing that we're asked to do is, or you are all asked to do is prioritize, so there is no amount that we go off of. And then that's, then the record takes that on and they go off of the amount and um what they did. They prioritize themselves and they go from there and that won't be till March.
Okay, thank you. Jared, do you want a quick minute to prioritize those and then we can just go down the list and if two of us have. Same priority, we'll just put that one in there and then if we're all three have a different priority, then we'll use a push train.
Always the oddest thing.
Yes, it is.
Very odd. Um.
You.
That's a wrap for your hope.
And I don't know, I've been a representative on the record or as a liaison. Um they will try. If there's any way upon. That it ties into the recreation, they'll do their best um upon that the whole in my experience. Okay, are you ready? I'll just read what I have in the number one slot and then if anybody agrees or disagrees, go ahead. I have uh Medicine Board Association.
I do as well. That works for me.
Okay. Um second, I had Larry Reston.
Second, I had. I would vote fairground on second.
Okay, fairgrounds is um third, I had common outdoor ground. Okay. Um fourth, I had fairgrounds, but something else uh you already have there.
Fourth, I had the learning. I go learning.
Okay, uh five, I had American Legion.
Five, I had learning. Learning.
Okay, um. Six, I had learning rifle range, so what you will have to come up with either trap club or American Legion.
American Legion.
Okay, and then seven uh will be the learning trap club. Get those there.
Yeah, can I read them back to you real quick?
Sure.
Uh one, I have Medicine Board Association, two, Albany County Fairgrounds, three, Common Outdoor Ground. Uh four. Laramie Wrestling Mr. Club. Five, uh rifle range. Six, American Legion, and seven, trap club. Okay?
Yeah.
Good, thank you.
Thank you all for your presentation. I really do appreciate it. Thank you guys. That was pretty good.
That would be fantastic.
Uh so I entertain a motion to approve that resolution twenty twenty three dash zero five with those priorities.
I move that we approve that.
Second?
Moved in second. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing that all is in favor, signify by saying aye please.
Aye.
Aye, all of the opposed in sight. That motion carries. Thank you all, and thank you for your presentations. Really do appreciate the work you do in the community. Super important. Item twenty, present for approval agreement between the Office of State Land Investment Forestry Division and the Albany County Commissioners. An amount up to exceed twenty thousand to purchase equipment for the Albany County Voluntary Fire Department and direct the fire warrant to sign. Chad, you morning.
Look, commissioners, uh this was a grant that we discussed the end of December. It was approved at that time. Um. There's been some turnover at the state. The state forester retired. There's an interim state forester, and so this documentation has trailed a little bit behind this, just hit our desk. Um we've actually already purchased all this equipment and it's all said and done. We just wanted approval for me to sign this final documentation as we turn.
I'm sorry.
Any questions, commissioners? I entertain a motion for.
I move that we approve item twenty as presented.
Second?
Moved in second. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing that all is in favor, signify by saying aye please.
Aye.
Aye, all of the opposed in sight. That motion carries. Thank you. Item twenty one, present for approval notice of the fall recipients for Arca funding. And maybe these have, but you have a minute.
Commissioners, um as you know, we've distributed Arca funding for nonprofits um done. This fall. Um. One of the requirements of our Arca funding is quarterly reports. Uh the last time we had the. Uh applicants that were not uh or in default, and we did eventually get their reports. Um. What we've done again is more letters of default. We had four this time this quarter. Um Unaccompanied Students Initiative. Main Street Alliance and then Action Resource Initiative, and I have two. With Action Resource Initiative. Um we actually did receive their receipts. We did not receive their reports, so. Um. But yes, we just had four this year, so those would be letters that will be going out um requesting that by the end of the month, we receive theirs. If not possible. Yeah, they could possibly have to turn in all their files.
Yeah, just a little background, um the grants office has um. Given a clear timeline. I mean, said uh repeated uh requests for the reporting. Reporting is incredibly straightforward um and. There were some ways uh some pretty high dollar figures with uh so. This would be. This will should be surprising to people listening.
And just so you know, these four um are. Not, not, not the fourth from the last time I had. Um these are four different ones. Um if they were. To repeat, then we would uh take it up with Jennifer on our next step, but these are four new ones, of course.
Okay, commissioners, any questions for Bailey? And I guess.
I move uh that we approve item twenty three as presented.
Twenty one.
Twenty one, yes. I don't have my glasses.
It's been moved in second. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing that all is in favor, signify by saying aye please.
Aye.
Aye, all of the opposed in sight. Motion carries, and then we'll go to point one eight here. Arca delicacy, please, Bailey.
Um so we had a couple of um couple of our nonprofit. Um recipients turn in their reports late. They were one day late, but it is the one they need to stick to. Um so they'll be receiving letters not. Those uh organizations are VOA and United Red. And I, um there are some background things with some of these organizations that I am aware of, but. They don't have to get their report sometime, so uh, yeah. Probably do, yeah.
Questions, commissioners? I entertain a motion for twenty one.
I move that uh we approve the letters in my confines.
Second?
Moved in second. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing that all is in favor, signify by saying aye please.
Aye.
Aye, all of the opposed in sight. That motion carries. Thank you, Bailey. Thank you for you and Brady for the work you've done. It's uh impressive. Um present for approval, item twenty two, resolution twenty twenty three dash zero six. A resolution supporting Albany County's grant patient for the provider recruitment and retention that selects. I need counties COVID nineteen health disparities grant application. Bailey and, no, I saw a camera earlier, but you.
So uh this application is uh to Wyoming Department of Health for. COVID money, um but what Kim would like to do with it is give her RN um four thousand dollars type thing. And as a retention fee. Um. And it needs a resolution that would be application. Pretty straightforward.
And just a little background, um. Art of this money. This is a legitimate use of this money.
Yes.
Your attention, so.
And Kim and I did have discussions about should it be everybody at public health, should it just be the RNs? We did decide it should just be the RN. Um a lot of other positions are fairly new. Um and it is for hearing COVID, so.
Commissioners, I entertain a motion for twenty two.
I move that we approve item twenty two.
Second?
Moved in second. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing that all is in favor, signify by saying aye please.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, all of the opposed in sight. That motion carries. Item twenty three, present for consideration, the Blue subdivision preliminary and final plot application. SD zero nine two two and a subdivision permit. Joe, good morning.
Morning, commissioners. Um. The applicant and owner is Mike Flutie, located at three twenty three Roger Canyon Road. The request is approval of preliminary and final plot and subdivision permit. Current zoning is split rural residential and agriculture. And access will be from Roger Canyon Road. There were some reviews. The assessor's office, Chelsea Matthews, had no concern. Um Karen Bowman, senior GIS analyst, had no concerns. Jake Snyder, county engineer, had had some concerns about the preliminary and final plaques and the engineering report, but they were taken care of. Rob Fisher, Road Bridge Superintendent, had no concerns. And Larry Rivers, National Safety Minister, Colleen Dyer, resource specialist, discussed the vegetation of roten and wells. Purple comments can be seen in the reviews that been. Um summary of subdivision permit requirements. Uh both lots will be provided water via well. Lot one already has a well. Newer um will be individual systems. Lot one has its optics in them. Lot two will need to apply for a small wastewater system through the Albany County Planning Department. Uh Wyoming DEQ review was not required as this is a small subdivision. Storm drainage report was complete for this proposal and approved by Jake Snyder, county engineer. Rocky Mountain Power will provide electricity. Gas will be provided by a private propane tank. Um US Postal Service is available in the area. No new roads are proposed um and therefore no road maintenance is required. Um financial assurance is not needed. Um fire protection will be by Albany County and notice has been provided in accordance with the Albany County planning and subdivision regulations. Chapter four, section nine. Findings of fact, the summary of subdivision permit requirements, applicant responses, and staff analysis as referenced in this report are firmly adopted as findings that the applicant has provided the. Board with adequate information that the requested and required findings, documentation, notice, and notations have been satisfied by the applicant and the C M R incorporated herein. Conclusions of law, the applicant is proceeding in accordance with and is in compliance with the requirements of the Albany County Planning and Subdivision Regulations. Staff analysis, this subdivision is being proposed in an already built area. Lots will be accessed from Roger Canyon Road. The addition of one lot in this area should not create any substantial impact to the area. And the preliminary and final plaque complies with the standards of the Albany County Planning and Subdivision Regulations. Uh a little bit of history on this parcel. Um at the September fourteenth, twenty twenty two, planning uh and zoning commission and the October fourth, twenty twenty two. Board of County Commissioners meeting, a zoning change from Ag. To rural resnel residential was approved uh for potential lot two. At the December fourteenth, twenty twenty two, Planning and Zoning Commission and the January third, twenty twenty three, Board of County Commissioners meeting. A variance request from the Albany County zoning resolution, chapter three, section three. D six A um. A site specific investigation shall be performed for all APOZ development within. The APOZ was approved for the parcel. And Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation unanimously voted to recommend to the Board of County Commissioners. Approval of the Blue subdivision preliminary and final plot application. SD zero nine two two and a subdivision permit. Adopting and incorporating the staff analysis, findings of fact, and conclusions of law as each are stated in this staff report.
Thank you, Joe. Commissioners, any questions? I entertain a motion for item twenty three, including the staff report finding of facts.
I know that you have completed subdivision preliminary and final plot application and the subdivision permit adopted and incorporated. Staff analysis, findings of fact, and conclusions of law as you just stated in your staff report. Or in this.
Second?
Second.
Moved in second. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing that all is in favor, signify by saying aye please.
Aye.
Aye, all of the opposed in sight. Motion carries. Thank you. Item twenty four, present for consideration. The Ice Bar subdivision final plot application, SD twelve dash two two and a subdivision permit, Joe.
All right, the applicant and owner is Galen Ice Bar, located at two fourteen North Fork Road. Uh the request is approval of a final plot application and subdivision permit. Current zoning and rural residential access will be from East North Fork Road and North Fork Road. Uh there were some reviews. Chelsea Matthews, county assessor, had no concerns. Karen Bowman, senior GIS analyst, uh asked for a statement on the flat stating the location of the westerly portion of block twenty one. This has been taken care of. Jake Snyder, county engineer, had no concerns. Rob Fisher, superintendent of Road Bridge, had no concerns. Holly Dyer, ranchland and watershed resource specialist for the Laramie River Rust Belt Basin District. Does not have any additional comment uh than what was provided in January. And Y dot Ryan Shields had no comments. Uh summary of subdivision permit requirements. Uh water will be provided, domestic water from individual wells. Sewers, um lots will be provided sewer systems by individual systems that will need to be applied for through the Albany County Planning Office. Uh there is an existing small wastewater system that serves the existing house, which is not proposed lot one. Wyoming DEQ review was completed for this application and received a non adverse recommendation. A storm drainage report was completed for this proposal and reviewed by Jake Snyder, county engineer. Rocky Mountain Power provides power to the area and gas is provided by Black Hills Energy. US Postal Service is existing. Uh no new roads are proposed. Road maintenance, um the applicant will need to pay into the existing road maintenance provider, the North Fork Owners Association. Financial assurance is not required. And fire protection will be by Albany County. Notice has been provided in accordance with the Albany County Planning and Subdivision Regulations, chapter four, section nine. Findings of fact, the summary of subdivision permit requirements. Applicant responses and staff analysis as referenced in this report are firmly adopted as findings that the applicant has provided the board with adequate information. That the requested and required findings, documentation, notice, and notations. Have been satisfied by the applicant and the C M R incorporated herein. Conclusions of law, the applicant is proceeding in accordance with and is in compliance with the requirements of the Albany County Planning and Subdivision Regulations. Uh some history about this parcel. At the May eleventh, twenty twenty two, planning and zoning meeting. And June seventh, twenty twenty two, Board of County Commissioners meeting, the variance request from the county regulations for a small subdivision. Within an already plotted subdivision requiring a review and recommendation from WDQ was denied for this application. The applicant has since followed county regulations for the review and recommendation from DEQ. At the November sixteenth, twenty twenty two, planning and zoning meeting, the Ice Bar preliminary plot application was recommended to the Board of County Commissioners to approve the preliminary plot application. Along with following condition that the commissioners concern. Regarding the adequacy of the evaluation of impacts to groundwater quality would be addressed and those concerns will be put in writing. At the December sixth, twenty twenty two, Board of County Commissioners meeting, the Ice Bar preliminary plot. Application was approved along with the following conditions that the commissioners concern. Regarding the adequacy of the evaluation of impacts to groundwater. Regarding the adequacy of the evaluation of impacts to groundwater will be addressed and those concerns will be put in writing by the chair. And that the applicant pay into the maintenance for that district. And at the December fourteen, twenty twenty two, planning and zoning meeting, a letter written by the planning and zoning chair. Explaining uh the commissioners' concerns regarding the adequacy of the evaluation of the impacts of groundwater quality. Will be addressed, was approved. Uh staff analysis, the findings. Uh the final plat complies with the Albany County planning subdivision. Planning and subdivision regulations. This subdivision is being composed in the North Fork area of Centennial. And the lots would be accessed from North Fork Road and East North Fork Road. Uh the planning and zoning commission unanimously voted to recommend to the Board of County Commissioners. Approval of the Einstein's forest subdivision final plot application, SD. Well, twenty two and a subdivision permit adopting and incorporating. The staff analysis, findings of fact and conclusions of law as stated in the staff report, noting that concerns with groundwater quality have been met.
Thank you. Do you have any questions?
Yes, um it's my understanding that uh North Fork is actually on carbon power and light, not. Um Rocky Mountain Power and light.
That's my mistake then. It may have also been any application. I'm not.
So would you please?
Yes.
Check on that. Make corrections.
Yep.
Thank you.
Please, I don't have anything.
No.
Um I've entertained a motion uh for item twenty four then first.
I move that we approve item twenty four as presented, including findings of fact. Including law. Second.
Moved in seconded, any further discussion? Hearing seeing that all the favors signify by saying hi please.
Hi. Hi.
I'll suppose inside. That motion carries. Thank you, Joe. Item twenty five, present for consideration, the Comnet Centennial Tower application, L U C T dash zero one dash two two. David, good morning.
Good morning. Commissioners, um. So the applicant is S I C Wireless on behalf of Comnet. Um the location of the request is well, Head Creek Road. Um the requesting approval of a tower permit with installation of a ninety five foot. Um telecommunication tower. Property is currently zoned agricultural and the uses. Being used as a ranch currently. Access to the properties um off of State Highway eleven. Um onto the private road, Head Creek Road. This was submitted to for review to a number of folks. Um. County engineer reviewed this, Jake Snyder requested stand tower structures and. Uh foundation plans. Um and then the fire district had no. No issues with the application or did um. Game and Fish or Laramie River's conservation districts, or I mean Department of Transportation. He'll report um traffic engineer asked that or just reminded that. Um to access this property, if there's changes or anything, um access permits will be required for the. For the project, so that will be required. Um. Just to summarize this request, um S I C Wireless. On behalf of Comnet is proposing to remove an existing seventy five foot um mockable telecommunication tower and replace it. With a ninety five foot mockable um telecommunication tower. This tower will accommodate ATNT and the first responders network authorities, high-speed wireless broadband network. Um this pro- project again will be accessed off of. Eleven. Findings necessary for approval. Um the proposed tower shall not adversely affect the public interest. The applicants provided their um proper site plan and survey. And then they're required to address the the following impacts, visual impacts, environmental impacts. Little location requirements, um. Exterior lighting, screen buffering, general nuisances, air traffic safety, and all of those were addressed by the applicants. Um we also provided a statement allowing the county to. Co-locate on that antenna if if you request to do so. Um. The brief analysis, the applicant has addressed the potential impacts of this um project. The setback standards for the tower is or temp- for towers is one foot from the property line for each. Um. Or yeah, one foot. For um the height of the the tower. Or towards the the property lines or um police lines. Um for every foot tower height, so. Let me say that again, so. I should just read what's on my paper and just try to sort of try to summarize it. So the standard is is for one foot of height, it has to be set back one foot from a property line or at least like, so. Sorry about that. Um. The applicant has met the standard from the property line, however, um it will not meet the se- standard for the lease line. Um what they provided in lieu of that was um a. An agreement with the landowner to create a fall zone. Um the fall zone would now allow bringing buildings or structures to be put in that area, so it basically does the same thing. Um and so staff believes that this needs intended to set back standard provides to be safely from potential tower. Or tower collapse. Um and then Y dot is requiring access permit for access from highway one thirty. Demolition or construction activities on this site shall not begin until. Um Y dot authorizes use of this access and documentation is provided to Albany County, the Albany County planning department. Findings of fact, the findings necessary for approval, applicant responses and staff analysis reference in this report. Are adopted as finds reflecting that the applicant has adequately addressed the specified impacts and the C M R incorporated herein. Inclusions of law, the applicant is proceeding in accordance with and finds with of the requirements of the Albany County zoning resolution. Um the planning and zoning commission discussed this project, um asked what. Questions to staff and the applicant, which will address to their satisfaction, a motion for approval was made. Um. And that that motion was approved unanimously. Um and yeah. They basically, they approved, they, the motion was to approve the Comnet. Centennial Tower application adopted incorporating the staff analysis, findings, black and conclusions law. As each are stated in the staff report. Any questions about this project?
So David, the additional twenty feet of height is. There to accommodate ATNT and the first responder network? Does the current tower not accommodate that?
Um. From what the applicant responded to planning and zoning when they asked the same question, um was that the structure wasn't. Um they couldn't add the additional equipment on there and it didn't be safe. Um so they had to replace it and then had to add a height to it, so so the answer is no, the the seventy five foot tower will not accommodate the.
Very well. All right, I entertain a motion for item twenty five, if there are no further.
I move that we approve item twenty five as presented. Second.
Moved in seconded, any further discussion? Hearing and seeing that all is a favor, signify by saying hi please.
Hi.
Hi, all the so, all the same side. That motion carries. Thank you, David. Um looks like you're up with us again. Item twenty six, present for consideration. An application for annexation to the city of Laramie of the portion of Bill Nye Avenue. Through Grand Avenue and Sherman Hill Road and authorize the chairman's aside, David.
Yeah, um Mr. Chairman Commissioners, um for a couple of me, this might be deja vu because we discussed this before. Um so I was contacted and. Apparently that annexation um application that was previously signed by this mission. Um and. To to go forward to the city has expired, um. And so they need a new signature on the the application order to go forward with. An annexation request to the city. Um so. They contacted me, I said that I would bring that forward to you um to discuss. Um. I will note that, you know, the the condition did. Um sign the previous application um after some. Quite a bit of discussion that was the Sherman Hill Road Improvement Service District. Um and there was also an MOU that was signed in February, last February as well. That addressed some of the concerns um with that road. Um we have received. Another response from the south or the Sherman Hills Room Improvement and Service District um for this. Many of the, many of the things that they um mentioned, I think we mentioned previously. And I'd just like to take a minute to address um my opinion, um what I can of of these. Um these concerns. So the the first concern that they had was. Um they noted that it won't be maintained, this road will not be maintained at the same standard unless the city. Has has annexed it in in its upgrade. Um I will first note that the that with the development, the speed proposed, it will be required to be um paved. Um sidewalks. Um all of all of that, it'll be built to city standards, um especially on that northwest side, they'll have, that's where all the side, the sidewalks and any things will be. So and it will be increased in size and be a much bigger road. It's a collector on the major street plan, so it'll be built to collector standards. The only thing that I'm aware of that would not be. Maintained um as is being maintained now is the snow removal. Um and I believe that there may, there growth of movement from the the district that I may, picking correctly, but that's. That's the one area that I know that um the city will not um maintain at the same standard because I know the district is out and takes care of those. Anytime it snows and um. So so that's the one thing that may be different and I believe that could probably be resolved through a. Um agreement, you know, with with the district and the city, if the district wants to maintain it more than what the city is going to do. I would think that that would be a possible solution, but I don't know if that's, conversation has taken place. Um their second point was the increase. Um from a twenty foot road to a fifty foot road. Um they note that. Um this, this is um aesthetically aesthetic modification that's unacceptable as well as a safety hazard. Um with what they provided to us, there was no engineering report or anything that said that there will be a safety hazard with this, so that's. The one thing that I would question because you don't have any information on that and aesthetically, oh. You know, uh probably, I guess. Um I don't have any comments on that. Their third point was that um. They the increase in. And this goes more to the development than to the annexation, but the development, if it goes forward, it's going to increase the traffic. Um on. This section of of Bill Nye to um Grand Avenue. Which, yeah, absolutely, it will will change that. Um. I I would, I would think again, this is a how Wyoming Department. Department of Transportation, Wyoming Department of Transportation. Uh issue, um they're the ones that that control that and and speed limits and things on that, that portion of the road, so. I don't know if there's much that the county can do um with that. Um to to mediate that concern. Um I believe that they, once they go forward with the development, they'll have to have all these engineering reports to say that, yes, this is still safe to. To come on and and get off with this road as part of the development within the city. I know that they require engineering reports just like we do, so I'm I'm sure that that will be addressed at that point, um. Not sure if it would be to the satisfaction of the district or not, but. Um and finally, the the last one um is. Is the ownership of the road. Um now. I think I would differentiate a little bit between. Who's taking care of the road and who owns the land, so that there's someone owns the right of way and someone owns the road in this situation. Um. The road itself. Um we have, I mean, we, I I think they even mentioned in their comment. It's. We have privately maintained public. Access roads, basically, meaning that the the pri- a private entities maintains a road. But the right of way or the easement is is set apart for public access. Now, um. The one thing that I would note is um. The the county does have a say in what happens on a right of way that is. Dedicated or otherwise set apart for public use. Um we see that all the time. Every time we have a vacation request. For a road, um the county commissioners are the authorized body to. Determine whether that vacation happens or whether it doesn't, so. Um we don't necessarily own the road, however. Um I believe the county commissioners are stewards of roads that are set apart for public use. Um so those are my opinions, I just wanted to to, you know, kind of address some of these things. Um. For you, and then I would be happy to stand for questions. If you have like it's.
Thank you, David. Commissioners, any questions for David?
David, thank you for giving the response to um. District's concerns, uh appreciated for having that information. In your opinion, David, as a planner, um um a planner, do you? Think it would be smart to wait on any annexation decision? So we are complete, uh completed with the joint cap as well as the uh N G A plans? Would there be, would it be smart to wait?
Um, you know, the cap may come into play, um. The growth plan, not so much, it doesn't really address these types of things other than. I mean, it's kind of in that area and it'd have to be, you know, if there were standards put into place for roads and things, that might come into play, but. I believe the standards are similar to set, the cities already or already has upon their books. Um. You know, if 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 it was the, if we wanted to wait for that, it would really push things back quite a bit. Um because I don't see the regulations being, um we have the plans that are trying to, we're trying to get approved. Um the regulations, um I mean, they can take another year to get approved, so that would be where, you know, they would really impact something like this. I guess my opinion would be, I mean, you need to act on the information that you have today, um. And uh go forward with that, I. Um I I mean, and it's it's totally up to you if you feel like. Um the county wants to give up. You know, kind of their control over this portion of the road or not, and that's really what we're looking at, we're not looking at the development, we're just looking at the road. Um so. So, yeah, I I don't. It it's hard to. I wouldn't recommend using um. Potential plans that may be put into place and the potential regulations. As um reasoning behind the decision you make on this.
Okay, uh thank you, David, um and then maybe uh Terry, Sherman Hills, if you'd like to talk, and then uh Mr. Walsh is here. If you would like to. Um aggressive, that'd be great. Good morning, Terry, thank you.
Good morning, commissioners, um. David stole my thunder. Whoops. Um. Uh my name is Terry Lund, I live at twenty two twenty five Range Urain, I'm going to speak. I represent uh as the chair of the Sherman Hill Road Improvement and Service District. I'm also speaking on behalf of, um specifically on behalf of some neighbors who couldn't be here today, Tom and Laura Washi. Uh I want to preface the comments that are in my letter, which um David's already outlined. By expressing my frustration and concern that at no time. Since the Walshes submitted their original application for annexation. Has the Sherman Hill Road Improvement and Service District. Been consulted by any of the players, the city, county officials or uh the developers. Um I have appreciated um those individuals, city and county decision makers, as well as. Christie Roberts, who I I see is here now. Um I've appreciated their willingness to speak to me about this. But all of those conversations have been initiated by me. Um that said, um I'm going to briefly review. Uh what is in the letter that I've sent to all of you. Um. Which essentially outlines. The reasons why the road district is opposed to the annexation. Of this segment of Bill Nye into the city. Um. And as as David's already said, there's four reasons, um. This segment of Bill Nye, like all the roads in the Sherman Hills subdivision, have been built. Improved and maintained by the road district for decades. Um. And the concern that we have is pretty much um regarding snow removal. Which the city has assured me they cannot maintain to the same. They cannot provide to the same standard that we do now. Um I see this um as an increased concern. If there are improvements made, and there will be, to that north side, central north. Side of of that segment of Bill Nye, which um. May or may not include landscaping, but simply. may or may not include landscaping, but simply the construction of sidewalk, uh, maybe a walking path, curb and gutter, is going to cause drifting. It, it just is. All I have are a few shrubs and plantings on the north side of my driveway, and I get a three-foot drift with every snowstorm. Um, second, um, it's, it is my opinion, I have not consulted an engineer, um, but that narrowing, sudden narrowing from fifty feet um as you enter uh the neighborhood, back down to twenty feet as Bill Nine continues uh to ease. Um, I, I mean, how will that happen safely? It's all the additional width of that road is going to be to the north. Um, there won't be any change on that south side, so there'll be thirty extra feet of, of a paved road that will suddenly then narrow back down to twenty. I, I, I can't quite picture it. Um, the Westies live at that intersection and they have some huge concerns, um, as I would and as I do, um, even though I don't live right there. Uh, the traffic situation at the intersection of Bill Nine Avenue, Bluebird Lane, across East Grand and Grand Avenue is already chaos. Um, everyone here, I'm sure knows why. Um, I've talked repeatedly with um Wyoming Department of Transportation about the potential for lowering the speed limit and their characterization, characterization of that stretch of East Grand is that it is a rural highway. Um, which by definition is true. It's two lanes going both direction with a turn lane. And um, what do I want to say? Um, on the sides, anyway. Um, yeah, so, they're right, but that characterization of rural highway that is uh worthy of a fifty-five mile an hour speed limit just isn't true anymore. Um, there, since, since that speed limit has, was established, there are now uh more small businesses, more residences, um, more access. Well, I think there's probably the same number of access and address uh points. But it's too fast. It's unsafe for both, um, um. Well, and then you add fifty-five, potentially fifty-five extra households um that may be using that intersection. Um, it's chaos. And finally, that question of who actually has the authority to convey that segment of road from the county to the city. I don't have that answer, and no one, I've spoken to not county attorney, not city attorney, um, county planner, most of you, um, know that answer. And I, I seriously feel like that question needs to be clarified. I don't have the skill set to do that. The road district doesn't have the funds to hire an attorney to give us an opinion on that. So, I think that is a question honestly that um you, the Commissioners, might have to search for the answer for before you authorize annexation. Thank you for your time and for your service.
Thank you, Terry. Anybody representing the uh developer here?
Yes.
Good morning.
One.
Kristy Roberts with well, I'm here representing um the developer this morning. Um, I want to thank you for your second consideration of this application. As David mentioned, that there is a state statute of limitation on the dates of the application signatures that we've had um gone beyond through the review and revision process of this subdivision. So, again, um, like David mentioned, we have done extensive engineering and traffic studies and drainage, all of those things, reports for the city. The preliminary plat- application has been submitted in full to the city. So all of those documents are done and reviewed and revised. So, um, I do want to make clear that the annexation application is just for the road right, right of way. The land that we are developing is already within city limits. Now, I don't anticipate that there'll be any new regulations in the cap that will affect road construction. Um, if, you know, the only thing that we're talking about is how that road is constructed. So I don't, that's gonna necessarily affect the hardcore burn. Um, I do want to remind the commission that the MOU that was prepared and authorized by both the county and the city was prepared in response to the Sherman Hills Road District's main concerns. And if the subdivision does not go through, the city will initiate a de-annexation process to bring it back into public ownership. Um. And I am here in, oh, I do want to mention one other thing. Um, part of our construction documents for this subdivision does include reconstruction of the intersection of Bluebird and Bill Nine and Grand Avenue. We will be aligning the intersections right now. There is an offset of about twenty feet that decreases the safety of that intersection. And YDOT and the city and the county, we're all pretty good conversations on how to improve the safety of that intersection. Do you have any other questions for me?
Thank you, Kristen Commissioners. Any questions?
Alright, thank you.
Thank you, Kristen. Is there any questions of anybody else? Anybody else want to speak? Please, Sarah.
Mister Chairman and Commissioners, thank you. I'm Sarah Gorman. I'm representing Albany County Clean Water Advocates. And I'd like to give you another reason to consider not signing this application. And this, and it relates to the comment that was made earlier by Commissioner Ibera. Um, the city and county are spending tens of thousands and tens of their dollars on funding the Casper Aquifer Protection Plan update and other efforts related to management of uses in the aquifer recharge area. And it seems prudent, given that we now know this is an annexation that is the first and necessary step and a proposal for a pretty intensive development, you know, particularly vulnerable area, the aquifer, that overlaps the Sherman Hills fall. That it's not just a road. We're talking about development within the aquifer protection area. And I want to make sure that you, you know, that city planning has rejected the preliminary plat- for this project mainly out of concerns over the Sherman Hills fall. I think that's a correct um characterization of their concerns. It's an opportunity to hit the pause button until the other work is completed and before a commitment that we can't take back is made. Um, I understand the concerns of the developer on the, the commitments that they made so far in terms of design and so on. But they knew when they bought the property that there was not access and that it was in the FPOC. So I think that people um need to be aware when they make those kinds of, of statements of there's possible, there are other concerns that come into play down the road. So I respectfully ask for your consideration. Um, thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Go ahead, David. It looks like you have something. Please.
Um, I just want to, I understand where Ms. Gorman is coming from, but I just want to reiterate what David pointed out, that relying on potential future plans and potential future regulations is problematic. And what we need to look at today is the annexation of the road provision. The other, the development part of it isn't our concern, but it's within the city on property that's already been annexed into the city. This is really just whether or not this commission wants to, um, re- essentially, if, there's a few minor changes in the application, but it's the same application, the same process that we went through a year ago. The MOU that we have in place with the city that we were talking about that provides the protections um, and provides that the city agreed that any landowners within the Sherman Hills Road Improvement District will not now or later be subject to um city regulations that may come into play later. Because we wanted to ensure that we were not putting the residents of Sherman Hills in the same situation that the residents who access their properties off a quarter horse drive found themselves in. These two things came up fairly, um, in a fairly tight timeline or within a year of each other. So we go all well there. Um, so I would just encourage you to look at the, the annexation of the road provision as its own issue. And the, there is the question of who owns the road, right? We're not talking in public. We don't own the road. We don't have a deed that lets the commission be on the road. But the commissioners, when the roads are dedicated to the public, do hold that in public trust, like we've talked about numerous times through various and, or through various um vacation petitions. So what we're looking at doing here is transferring a road from being a public road and held in a public trust to still being a public road and held in public trust. So, as far as um what the liability for this commission is, should you choose to grant this annexation. There are always concerns that can be raised, but the opinion of our office is that you do have the ability to grant this based on the powers and duties that you have within statutes and the case law interpretation of numerous other issues that have arisen over the course of land use law. The other thing I would point out is that the deed that transferred the property um into the Sherman Hills Development plan prior to even the lots being developed was a non-exclusive easement um that was transferred to them, which means that that road is not just for the increases. So are there any questions that I can answer?
Any question? Thank you, Jennifer, with that. Yes, please. Your hand with a person, then we'll go to Terry. Yep.
I have a handout, Mayor.
Sure.
Uh, my name is Kimberly Starkey. I live twenty-two, sixteen Skyview Lane. I am also a member of the Sherman Hills Road Improvement Service District, has been in practice for over thirty years. Help maintain uh Bill Nine. I'm opposed to the Board of County Commissioners submitting an application for annexation to the City of Laramie for approximately one point two acre portion of Bill Nine Avenue and Grand Avenue to Sherman Hill Road involving uses. That section of Bill Nine Avenue was dedicated for public use by the Sherman Hill Land Development Incorporated as the owner in peace symbol. The road was not dedicated to, nor given to Albany County. Ownership was not transferred to Albany County Government, and the county never accepted the road as a county road. If you take a look at the map I just handed out, this was generated by the county GIS director. And I believe the data on, on the map comes from the assessor. You'll note that Bill Nine is labeled as a private road. It's with the black dashes. The county roads are la- labeled in yellow. And you'll notice there are some other county, there are some county roads. Bluebird is one of them, just uh Sage, but not Bill Nine. So by the county's own admission, and you can double check the assessment, I, I would appreciate if you would, since they, the county assessor is the um official rent holder of assessments for the county. Since county is not the owner of that section of Bill Nine and has not proved, produced proof of ownership. Matter of fact, we just had two staff members say that the county does not own the way. Um, ownership, proof of ownership is required by Wyoming State Statutes for annexation. So if the county has no property to convey to the city, this application should die in the pursuit. Wyoming State Statutes regarding annexations specify that the land that the annex excludes public roads. The public roads, in this case, Bill Nine Avenue, are excluded from the area to be annexed into the City of Laramie as requested by LARIS Land LLC. There is no land to be annexed. Clearly, an application for annexation, which includes only a road, is not, is not supported by the purpose of the annexation statutes, nor the letter of the law. In accordance with Wyoming State Statutes, Albany County declared and organized declared the organization and estab- establishment of the Sherman Hill Road Improvement and Service District. By definition, it must include land outside of public limits. The district is a voluntary creation of the state of Wyoming. Albany County has no statutory authority, statutory authority to remove a road from a road district and legally convey it to the City of Laramie, and no such authority has been cited by the county. The members of the Sherman Hill Road Improvement Service District have a vested interest in Bill Nine Avenue as they currently pay taxes to the district and have for many years maintained that road. As stated before, any member of the public may utilize a road within the district. However, the district's bylaws require that proposed subdivisions that are accessed by roads maintained by the district shall be reviewed by the uh, by the dis- the district board of directors with compliance with approval of the standards and specifications established by the district's bylaws. This review has not occurred nor has it been approved. Finally, the City of Laramie currently has a right of way access policy, which allows the city manager to charge required renewable fees for access and maintenance of city roads. Some of the fees are unspecified. One of the uh unaffordable denials for access is access to subdivisions to the city streets. That's the definition of, of denying access to everyone who, who sold acts, legal access to their properties today is that section of Bill Nine. In conclusion, if the Albany County Commissioners agree to sign an annexation of the aforementioned section of Bill Nine into the City of Laramie, it will result in unnecessary expense to members of the Sherman Hill Road Improvement Service District. May restrict their legal ac- access to their homes and property and ban back illegal.
Thank you, Kimberly. Any questions? Excuse me, sorry. Okay, thank you. Jerry?
Um. Just a couple of points of clarification. One, um, uh, the members, in other words, the residents of Sherman Hill Estates um pay an assessment that is established by the Board of Directors of the Road District. Um, and, and that is paid um along with our property tax. So it's not actually tax money um that we're collecting. We're collecting an assessment um that we then use to maintain all the roads. I just wanted to clarify that, what it's worth. Um, and then David's point about um the possibility that we might continue to maintain plow, basically, that stretch, even if it were to be annexed by the city. Um, in conversations with Derek Teen, um, that is unlikely to be um advisable because of liability concerns. Um, if it's a city road and we then hire a private snow plow driver, um, and there's damage, um, that could be a huge problem. Um, and I've already been informed by the guy who plows the roads now, what the increased cost to us would be of the enlarged surface area, and that's, again, not in our budget. So I just, a couple of things to, um, do any, did any of you have questions for me? Great.
Anybody else who'd like to speak about the Sherman Hills? Right. Okay. Uh, Commissioners, any further clarifications that you guys need to make? Okay, please, Kimberly.
I'm sorry, on another issue, I forgot. I have a petition here signed by some of the members of the Albany, or excuse me, of the Sherman Hill Road Improvement Service District. Um, this is just circulated over this past weekend, so there really aren't that many signatures when you consider how many people are in the district. But as Terry pointed out, no one in the district was, uh, alerted that this issue was even coming before you today, which I am very upset about too. In any case, if I had more time, I would guess I give probably over ninety percent of it, the members to sign this application, which simply requests that this commission do not approve and submit an, excuse me, an application for annexation to the city for that section of Bill Nine. Now, excuse me.
Thank you, Kimberly. Both you and Jerry was, uh, chested that, uh, no one in your, uh, district, you know, just supports the petition.
I have not spoken to anyone who supports the annexation. I haven't spoken to everyone, but everyone that I have spoken to is not for it.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioners, anything else? Okay, um, is it, is it, please, support it. Good afternoon, though.
I didn't realize. Misses and everybody, uh, this has never been mentioned, but it is a safety hazard down there. They have, I live at sixty-one twenty-one Abbey Jack Trail in Sherman Hills. And we have a, an animal problem out there. Our little resident animal, who goes across Grand Avenue all the time. They're out to the interstate, really. And I did talk to a member of the, um, Wyoming Department of Transportation employee, and I mentioned it to him, I said, can't you put a sign out there or something? I mean, you don't think you're gonna run into an owl between Walmart and the highway that you do. And there have been probably two or three every season that they didn't get filled out there. Uh, I think that's a real safety hazard. It's probably minor, but I just wanted to mention that.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else online? Anybody? Okay, well, I would, uh, entertain a motion for item twenty-six, please. There is no motion for item twenty-six. Jennifer, any thoughts about that?
Um.
Do we, do we need a motion? If there's a lack of a motion, I do, um.
If, no, there is no motion. If the intention is, um, if, if the ultimate intention is to not approve the annexation request, it would make the record more clear if there was a motion and a second, um, for purposes of discussion, should there be, and then a vote.
Okay, so did the motion be?
I'll make them.
Okay, go ahead.
I move that we, um, approve item twenty-six as presented. On second, same kind of discussion.
Moved it second, any further discussion?
Yes. Um, I absolutely agree with all of the people from Sherman Hills and their reason for not wanting, you didn't need to stand up. The reasons that the people in Sherman Hills do not want to have this road annexed. I completely support the, um, subdivision. But the biggest problem here is the city's strong army. And I think that's despicable, and we all know that the city is not ethical.
Any further discussion? You know, I just really, um, have to push back about some of that. We have regulations and, and we require access, and so the city requires access, and so ethics aside, um, I think to describe intent, um, to an entity's, um, ways are really difficult. And so there is no need for this commission to be in ethically determining what the city of Laramie wants or was, does not want to do. Um, we can just vote it down and then we'll be done with it. Um, but I really would like there to be a different course of action on how we deal with the people and cities and entities here. Um, it's just, we can be, we can disagree. But we don't have to be disagreeable in our disagreement. And so I think that's really important. I do not support the, the notion that this is a strong army. I do not support the notion that this is unethical. I may not vote for, um, this annexation, um, just simply that I disagree. Um, and so, uh, just want to put that in the record. But moved in second, any further discussion? Hearing and seeing on all those in favor signify by saying aye. All of the opposed, same side?
Aye.
Aye. That motion fails. Uh, thank you. Thank you for your interest. Thank you for your, uh, willingness to engage in, in the difficult conversation. Thank you. Item twenty-seven. Set for approval, quote from Luon Technologies, a zero eyes company for purchase of workstations, laptop, and amount like to see twenty-four thousand nine hundred ninety-five dollars. Adam, good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Thank you for having me today. Um, before you is competitive bed set for a, uh, start kind of yearly workstation refresh. Um, we went a little heavier on the laptops this time as there seems to be a need for rotational checkout for laptops as different county assets and county personnel, um, travel or different responsibilities. Um, we've seen an increase there, um, as well as a workstation refresh, some of the hangarounds across the different departments, the little machines that are there. So that'll be a four-year cycle out on these. Uh, this also accompanies, uh, twenty monitors to accompany the, to the ten workstations. Any questions I can answer there regarding that?
Thank you.
Yeah, and tell me where are these workstations?
Where are they currently?
Yeah.
Um, there are a section of the, like in the legal office across the streets. Um, the majority of the desktops over there are four to five-year hand-me-downs um, for the attorney interns that are regarding there. There's still some stragglers out of Rock River, Roden Bridge, and Public Health, um, of which are needing updated to pull within that spectrum, and that should. And then there's a couple extra in there for expansion or miscellaneous needs as we have failures or expansions.
Thank you, Adam.
Yep, sure. Very interesting. All right, entertain a motion for item twenty-seven, please.
I move that we approve item twenty-seven. Second.
Moved it second, any further discussion? Hearing and seeing that all is a fair, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same side. That motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Adam. Item twenty-eight, spin the rules. Item twenty-nine, proceeds of letter appointing. Brian, um, now, is it Sabaye or Sabey?
Sabey.
Sabey, not even, for two. At the Albany County Extension Coordinator, Brian, good afternoon.
Yeah, thanks for having me. So yeah, uh, I think I know everyone, but I'm Brian Sabey. So as we talked about um, a little bit ago, uh, Mary Louise Wood moved to Park County. Um, so that's where she's now working for UW Extension. So, um, I am now, uh, county coordinator, so I'll be the liaison, uh, between you, UW Extension. Um, so any questions or concerns you have, you can come to me, talk to me, um, and I'll hopefully be in good communication with you of anything that, uh, comes from the UW side stuff, so. So yeah, currently it's just, uh, myself and Sarah Gonzalez, and then Jess Dooley, who is, uh, Sensible Nutrition in our office, so. Um, so Sarah and I are trying to do our best, make sure we can keep things going until we get our new person. Um, but, uh, the position for Mary Louise closed, uh, the end of January, so in the next, uh, few weeks we'll be moving on that process, so.
Thank you, Brian. It is nice to see a brother facing the experience and taking over for Mary Louise. Commissioners, any questions?
No questions. It's welcome.
All right, thank you.
Good luck.
I guess we needed a, um, a motion to acknowledge this, okay. Item thirty, um, make appointment to the Allen County Planning and zoning Commission. This is a term that expires, an expired term that will be expiring January first, twenty twenty-five. Did it take a motion?
I move that we appoint Marah and David to find the zoning commission.
Second, they're moved in second. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing that all is a fair, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed?
Aye.
That motion carries. Um, item thirty-one, make appointment to the Albany County Historic Preservation Board. There are two, uh, openings. The first one, um, let's feel in the order they're written, um, was fired April first, twenty twenty-five, uh, to fill in a vacant for I entertain a motion for that, uh, Historic Preservation Board.
I move that we appoint Jonathan Brooks to the Historic Preservation Board for the term of twenty twenty-three. Second.
Moved in second, any further discussion? Hearing and seeing that all is a fair, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same side? That motion carries. And then the second of the Historic Preservation is to fill, um, a term that expires April first, twenty twenty-three, um, but the hope that a reappointment will take place, um, um, for April, for a bigger term, and April twenty sixteen. And can a motion for that?
I move that we appoint, uh, I can't remember which one, which is it? Did we just do Cynthia?
No, it says Cynthia.
All right, I move that we appoint Cynthia there for the Historic Preservation Board. Second.
Moving second, any further discussion? Hearing and seeing that all is a fair, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same side? That motion carries. Item thirty-two. Um, reappoint Edward Siegel for the Area Four and Holly Kennedy for Area Three of the Albany County Weed and Pest Control District to applicants to openings.
I, I move that we reappoint, uh, both, uh, Ed- Edward Siegel and Holly Kennedy to the Weed and Pest Board. Second.
Then moved in second, any further discussion? Hearing and seeing that all is a fair, signify by saying aye.
Aye, aye.
Aye, all opposed, same side? That motion carries. And now the worst part of the meeting, uh, item thirty-three. Acknowledge receipt of a letter of resignation from Steph Baker, Albany County Emergency Manager, and direct the sheriff to advertise a position. Definitely would like to say something great if you would rather not. That's fine.
Uh, pulling at the heartstrings. Uh, I feel really guilty about this decision, and I've struggled with it. I've not slept well the last couple of weeks. I've had a really great opportunity up here, and the support system professionally has been wonderful. Um, the commissioners, um, grants, everybody in the clerk's office, Erin has been a wonderful supervisor. Um, I'm sad to leave. I don't know what the right decision is. Time's not on my side, as, as we've talked, and, um, I'm at a loss for words. So I'm, I'm grateful for the opportunity. I'm excited that I think we've laid a good foundation for the way forward for emergency management, and I'm excited that, um, I know Kate will take really good care of the program for it. And I will, we just continue with life safety as our number one priority, because that's what it's been for me. Thank you. I will miss everybody.
Steph, thank you for being here today. Thanks for the work you've done, um, on behalf of the commission. We do appreciate it. Um, I know it's a tough decision, um, but maybe someday our paths will cross again, and, and we'll see the back and not leave now. Um, we look forward to that day.
Thank you. Sure. I want, I want to acknowledge Lucy that this is, I want to acknowledge the work that she's done. She's really done a great job of bringing in training, safety training, and being a huge priority at all levels. Uh, worth a lot, and I know, uh, you're going to be missed. It's wonderful to hear such accolades coming from you about the support that you've gotten on all levels here. That's nice to hear that you have that behind you. I, I hope that some of it was because of you, who you are, but I also hope that whoever, who we put in this position are going to remain that kind of support. So I want to wish you the best of luck in your endeavors, and thank you for making Albany County's a good place.
Thank you.
And I'm so pleased with the work that you've done on that, particularly the animal evacuation providers. Because sometimes, that's a hard joint effort there, guys. I'm not, um, because with that planning, it certainly helps when we have to do evacuations, when everybody knows what, what's on board and what we can do, and, and so, thank you.
I appreciate those accolades. I cannot take credit for that. That was all Kate and Taylor. They just had my full support and
Well, that's a big deal. Thank you.
That is important to the community, and, um, a big project going forward is working on our sheltering plan. Is not necessarily for livestock, but with humans and, um, getting documents, MOUs, in order, because I, granted, I come from the metro area. I'm very liability driven. I want to take care of my department. I want documents on paper. I understand that things may be done a little bit differently up here with verbal agreements and handshakes that may be decades old. I think going forward, we really need to focus on that and just making sure we're protecting ourselves and our people and our property.
But the people are more cooperative when they know that their animals are going to be taken care of, and yes, they don't want to leave. They can't take their animals. That's all. That is huge and completely understated. And like I said, it's a whole family. Get care of this. Thank you.
Thanks, Steph. And we'll see you in the future.
Yeah, I just want to say that the professional relationships up here, that was the hardest decision. The hardest part of leading is I have not felt this support professionally in my career ever, and I think Albany County, all aspects of it should be proud of, of that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, item thirty-four, approved voucher for February twenty twenty-three. I entertain a motion.
I move that we can buy a ticket for February twenty twenty-three. Second.
Moved it second, any further discussion? Hearing and seeing that all is a fair, signify by saying aye.
Aye, aye.
Aye, all opposed, same side? Motion carries, no more business.
Can you, on item number thirty-three, can you make a motion? Because, uh, because this is a state mandated or temporary position, we need to direct the sheriff to advertise.
Okay. Well, thank you, yes.
I move that we, uh, acknowledge or accept the letter of resignation with Steph Baker and direct the Albany County Sheriff, uh, to advertise. My second.
Moved in second, any further discussion? Hearing and seeing that all is a fair, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye, aye.
Aye, all opposed, same side? That motion carries. Thank you. Now, uh, seeing no more business for the Albany County Commission on, uh, February seventh, twenty twenty-three. Uh, call this meeting adjourned. Then we'll look forward to seeing you in two weeks. Thank you. Same spot. Yeah, it's a pocket. Have a nice night or an afternoon. Thank you. That is how we go and chat.